Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 1st, 2016 Regular Meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Please join me as we salute our flag.
Alderman Anderson.
Present.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Alderman Beatty is excused. Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Gurman.
Here.
Alderman Genitazio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardiman.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
Here.
Thirteen present, Mr. Chairman.
Thirteen present, we do have a quorum. Thank you, Madam Secretary. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wanting to address the board can do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll go on to the meeting.
I'd like to talk about Twin Oaks Terrace proposed cul-de-sac.
Sir, can you speak your name and address for the regular...
Oh, I'm sorry. Name is Steve Craftella, and I live at 37 Sycamore Road, Milford. In regard to Twin Oaks Circle and proposed cul-de-sac, I have no real problem with that as long as the neighbors think it's fine, and as long as the lights of the new roadway don't shine into my house. I'm within 200 feet of the property, of the proposal. My only concern is residential properties along Twin Oaks Circle. It's a nice little neighborhood, and I'd rather not see the auto dealers expanded to any of those residential lots. So if there could be a stipulation put on the approval of this project saying that those lots have to stay residential, I'd appreciate that. There's one lot that's already owned by an auto dealer, and the next lot next to it is for sale, and I don't know what'll happen. He might buy that, too. And that one abuts my backyard. I don't want any cars in my backyard, or just beyond the fence of my backyard. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanting to address the board at this time? Seeing none, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Three, consideration of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on July 11th, 2016.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There was no special meeting under Chairman's report. I really don't have anything this evening. Move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Miss Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Good evening. Hope everyone is enjoying the summer. We've had great, fantastic Milford shoreline weather, lots of activity on the beach. Oftentimes you hear that people take vacations in the summer. People are less busy in the summer because the business of, in this case, the city, is not happening, but I can tell you that is absolutely not the case. While there are some folks off on vacation, the city is busier than ever. We have people enjoying all of our public services to a degree that we've never really experienced before. Our beaches are so jam-packed throughout the course of the week and on the weekends that we have Public Works now maintain the beach Saturday and Sunday, where previously that had not been the case. We have to pick up garbage both Saturday and Sunday. We have to get into the restrooms and the facilities to maintain those beaches because they are so well utilized. It's a good thing, but our Public Works, to give them a lot of credit and a lot of compliments, have really been doing a good job putting in the extra time, making sure that their budget allows for it, and making sure that beaches which are crazier than ever are being well-maintained. That's the same for a lot of our park and rec facilities, too. Each and every weekend, a lot of our beaches and our other recreational venues are being more well utilized just by the number of permits. Two to three times as many permits have been pulled this year in comparison to ever before. It's a very busy time for outdoor fun in the city of Milford. Not only that, we have a lot of new businesses coming to Milford. I've mentioned this before, but the last two years we've had an explosion, a real renaissance. 388 businesses last year, 396 the year before. Our construction permits for commercial and industrial building permits have increased. From last year, they were at $16 million; this year, $37 million. If you go back to, you know, 2011, they were at $11 or $12 or $13 million previous. Our total permits this year have been $82 million in new construction. So our building department has had an explosion. There's a lot of new growth coming into Milford, a lot of activity. It has put a real stress on some of the city's services, but again, to give compliments where compliments are due, our city employees have really risen to the challenge and are doing an exceptional job. So with that update, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully request your consideration and action on those items 8A through 8G. If you have any questions throughout the course of the meeting, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Unfinished Business. Item 8G has been postponed from our July meeting, and it will remain on the table until the September Board of Aldermen meeting at the request of the applicant. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, New Business, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 8A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the appointment of Mark Tuttuny at 212 Cedarhurst Lane as a member of the Pension and Retirement Board to fill the present vacancy, a three-year term expiring 12/31/16.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8B.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the appointment of Christopher Heiser, 81 Loomis Street, as a member of the Milford Government Access Television Committee, MGAP, to fill the present vacancy, two-year term expiring 12/31/17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, all of our newly confirmed... You have one more?
Yeah.
8C, I'm sorry. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the appointment of Vito Castignoli, 843 North Street, as a member of the Sewer Commission, to fill the present vacancy, two-year term expiring 12/31/18.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, at this time, all of our newly confirmed Board and Commission members come to the front of the auditorium to be sworn in by our City Clerk.
I just need you to sign something afterwards, okay? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you will uphold your duties and responsibilities as a member of the Sewer Commission for the city of Milford so hope you God or under the pain or penalty for perjury or false statement?
Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8D.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the endorsement of the Veterans Ceremony and Parade Commission July 11th, 2016 meeting to support the Milford Garden Club's Blue Star Memorial Marker Project as a tribute to the Armed Forces and in celebration of the club's 90th year as a community organization, as requested by Alderman Ellen Beatty.
At this time, I'd like to have Alderman Beatty recognize our guest. Could you see that?
Through you. Yes, I would like to invite the Milford Garden Club representatives to come up, Ms. Kathy Kobison, to give a presentation on the Blue Star Project. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to all the aldermen and older women. My name is Kathy Kobison, and I am a member of the Milford Garden Club. Our organization, as Chairman Veccharelli, or as Member Veccharelli said, is celebrating our 90th year this year, and as part of the planned year-long celebration, we would like to install a Blue Star Memorial Marker as a tribute to the Armed Forces who have defended and continue to defend our nation. Blue Star was adopted in 1945 by the National Garden Clubs Incorporated to honor the men and the women of the Armed Forces in World War II, and it was the first nationwide beautification program initiated by the National Garden Club. You can read the information in the brochures that we have presented before you, and also there's a little plaque that we gave, a little pin for each one of you as well. The memorial marker is made of cast aluminum and is 41 inches high, 45 inches wide, and has raised gold relief lettering with a prismatic star on a copper shaded background. The photo of the memorial marker gives you an accurate impression of what it will look like. This one, I think, was from Portsmouth, New Hampshire. It is double-sided, so you can see the message on both sides as you go past it. The wording on the marker states, quote, "A tribute to the Armed Forces that have defended the United States of America," end quote. We've already spoken to and received, as you mentioned, a positive response from the Veterans Ceremony and Parade Commission regarding the location of the memorial. The front of the Fowler Building on New Haven Avenue has been selected as an appropriate spot to place the memorial. I have spoken with Chris Sale, and I see him here tonight, I saw him before, from Public Works, and have been assured that Public Works can do the simple installation of the marker. The location would be ideal for viewing on both sides, especially after the Founder's Walk project is completed. The Milford Garden Club will be having fundraising efforts over the coming months and asking public organizations as well as private individuals to contribute to the cost of the marker and low-maintenance landscaping. Appropriate plants and shrubs that have a strong association with our military and the state of Connecticut would be considered, such as the mountain laurel, which is Connecticut State Flower, as well as the floral symbol for the United States Air Force. Our projected date of installation would be Memorial Weekend of 2017. We're honored to have the support of the Veterans Ceremony and Parade Commission, and this evening we ask for the support of the Aldermen and our mayor for this project. There would be no cost to the city of Milford, and as Public Works already does the maintenance at Fowler Building, it makes a great deal of sense. Well, thank you for your time, and a special thanks to our military who serve and protect our way of life. Thank you.[1025.61][1025.61](applause) If anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Kathy and your group in the garden... Thank you for going forward with the initiative of the Blue and Gold Star Memorial and the plaque, so I congratulate you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. It's a nice way to celebrate our 90th anniversary, you know, as a club. We're honored to do it. You're welcome. Well, thank you very much.
And thank you very much for...
Yes, oh yes?
Thank you very much for honoring our veterans and delivering that great plaque.
Thank you, Chairman Beatty.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Kathy, members of the club. Thanks very much for bringing this before us, and I'd like to thank Alderman Beatty for her support of this initiative. It's certainly timely, isn't it?
Yes.
And traveling around the country, you do see Blue and Gold Star markers, but the connection to the garden clubs is not often told. So what you shared with us tonight is very important from a historic standpoint. Just a technical question for you. I know that Public Works now maintains the grounds for Fowler, and there's signage in front with flowers and other plantings for the Fowler sign. Have you talked to Public Works about maintaining both beds? They're maintaining both beds, or you're maintaining both beds?
We talked about the installation of the marker, but we didn't discuss about the maintenance. We keep it very low maintenance. I know they come up there with the trucks with the water. I've seen them do it, and they, you know, they do cut the lawn there as well. So we would have very simple...
So let me put a bug in your ear, and to try to keep it simple, it would make sense that one or the other organizations maintain both beds, because it's a very small frontage along New Haven Avenue. And would this be to the left of the sidewalk or the right of the sidewalk?
As you're looking at the building, it would be to the right of the sidewalk, closer to where the Founder's Walk would be installed eventually.
Thank you very much, and thanks again for bringing this before us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you. Good night.
There's a motion on the floor. We need a second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8E.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the acceptance of a municipal and state agency electric vehicle, EV, charging station incentive program grant, and to authorize the mayor, director of community development, and his city attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said program.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8F.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached resolution regarding the cash advance for the municipal and state agency electric vehicle charging station incentive program.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8G.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes for the abandonment of a portion of Twin Oaks Terrace, and to authorize the city attorney and mayor to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said abandonment.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, why are we not selling this rather than abandoning it? Abandoning it?
We don't own it. We don't own it in fee. We could not sell it.
And this is what we're understanding. Could you explain what that is? And it's a road, it's a city street, and yet we don't own it? We're property on it?
It's a public right-of-way. If you want to get more detailed, I can have the city attorney give you some of the nuances from a legal standpoint, but it is a public right-of-way that we do not own in fee simple.
Is not every street a public right-of-way?
Most streets are public rights-of-way unless they're owned. There's private roads. An example of a street that's owned in fee simple is Old Town Road. It's owned by the mall.
So that closes down once a year, and this would have to be closed down once a year? Is it closed down once a year now?
No. This is a public right-of-way that a portion of this is being abandoned by the city. Or that's the proposal.
Okay, I'm still maybe... Mr. City Attorney, can you shed some light on the understanding of right-of-way, not owning it, owning some and not owning others?
Mr. Chair, through you, to Alderman Vitale. A public right-of-way allows the public to pass and repass. The city, in accepting the street, we accept, when we build a new city street, has to be to city specs. We provide city services to that. What you're doing is you're abandoning... In this proposal, there's an abandonment of a portion of it, so the public would not have a right to pass and repass in the area. The cul-de-sac would be closed down. We don't own it like a city-owned parcel. City-owned parcel, which we own in fee simple, which has an appraised value, we can sell it, alienate it as we wish for a price that we wish. A public right-of-way is not a fee interest. It's simply we're the holder of the public right-of-way. So that's why the request, under 824, to either sell, lease, transfer, or abandon municipal property, this falls into the abandonment. While it's not municipal property, it is, you have to abandon a public right-of-way. If you've accepted a public street to abandon any portion of it, you've got to go through this process.
So if we... Mr. Chair, just to follow up. So if we go through the idea of abandonment, does the property now have any restrictions or constraints that the person to whom we are abandoning it have over the city? In other words, could they close that down? Could they...
We're not abandoning it to anybody. We're abandoning the public right-of-way to pass and repass.
Just the concept of...
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had an opportunity to speak to some of the people in the audience tonight and to go over this detailed map, and it seems as though, well, it seems like the neighbors are happy with this. I am a little concerned with the two parcels on the very end. One, I think, currently belongs to the dealership. It's a residential property, I believe, and then the one right adjacent to it seems to be maybe a piece of property that may become available, again, residential. But I certainly would like to see those properties remain residential. It's not a large neighborhood to speak of, and I would hate to see the encroachment of the dealership on these residential properties. I... It's not this board's purview to okay that or not, but while this does come before us, and our member, a member of the audience, has also expressed this concern about this encroachment, I hope that in the future it's not the dealership's plan to encroach on the neighborhood's residential area. Also, parking has been a problem down here in this area, and we've heard from a member of the audience that has a restaurant down there, that public street, and sometimes when the parking lot is full for his establishment, then some of the overflow would then go onto the public street. And I guess they don't really care sometimes if they park on both sides. I don't think they're supposed to be on both sides, but, you know, sometimes people, they don't listen and they don't pay attention to the street signs. So parking's been a little bit of an issue, and I see on the plans here that there are some parking spaces adjacent to the restaurant. But what concerns me with those spaces is that I... There is no time limit, so you could have anyone come over there and park a car as long as it was registered, or... And just leave it there and have additional parking in front of their house, or in their driveway, or whatever. So I think this parking here, these parking spaces, was really meant to facilitate parking in this area without really impacting the neighborhood residential homeowners. So I am very happy to see these parking spaces there, but I do believe that there should be a time limit, and I think certainly two hours would offer anybody that's parking there to, well, if they wanted to walk to the dealership from those spots, they could, or visit any number of restaurants to the right, or stores. But I don't think that we should allow them to have, like, overnight parking and all-day parking. I don't think that's what it was designed for. So I certainly would like to see a two-hour parking limit on those spots, at least for the business hours, anyway. And then, while there's currently 11 parking spaces, as I look at this map, you know, we're close to cutting hairs here between making this work perfect and not perfect, because if there's an overflow, where, let's say that there was 11, 12, 14 cars that at any one time were using the street... any one time were using the street to park in front of these homes and probably aggravate the homeowners, we've tried to eliminate that with some of these parking spaces, but we know that 11's probably not going to do it. So my thought is, is if we really want to be, make this a very happy meeting of the minds here with, I believe, in my discussion with Westcott Mapes, that they don't really have any objections to increase in the spaces, say, from 11 to 14. And also, a two-hour parking limit. It, it seems like it would be a happy marriage and everybody could possibly live with this. There was a little discussion that maybe the PD didn't want as many spaces, but I would like to approve this plan with the added language that the police department, first, if they could take a look at this and possibly offer the two-hour parking and give us a minimum of 14 parking spaces, I would have no problem with this, and I hope that my colleagues would also support this. So I would like to just continue, I'd like to continue the debate, discussion on this, at which, and at the end of that, I would like to make a motion, but I'd like to hold my motion off for the two-hours limit and the 14 spaces until after this board has had a chance to review this and talk about it. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I look at the 11, 11 parking spots, and talking to the neighbors, and their own parking problems, that even with the 11 spots, people will still be parking in front of their homes. So I agree with Alderman Veccharelli, but I would like to see the, the 11 spots turned into 25, and reconfigure the turnaround at the cul-de-sac. There's a couple spots there that you could put in more parking that would allow the neighbors to park there also. And people will not park in front of their homes, even if it comes to, as one of the homeowners said, there's no parking on, on one side of the street, but they still park there. They park on both sides. So with the addition of the other 14 spots, that may alleviate that problem, and will also allow people, another area for the park when they're going to go and look at cars. The other thing that I was concerned about is the, is the berm that they want to put around as dividing between the road and the dealership, of what they're going to actually put there. Because they're going to put a new sidewalk in that area. If we plant trees there, we all know that after a while, the trees grow big, pushes up the sidewalk, now the city has to go back in and put new sidewalks, even though it will be up to the dealership to maintain the sidewalks for snow removal and things like that. I would just like to see something other than trees that will grow up and actually push up the sidewalk. The other part is with the 25 spots, I don't think you'd have to limit the parking to two hours. You may or may not, but those are just my suggestions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, in response to Alderman Bevan's concern about having trees within the four-foot berm, I think it's important to note for the record that this design plan is based on the agreement that was established between Gold Coast Realty, which is Colonial Toyota, and the residents who reside along Ford, Gunn, and Peck Streets. And we were able to work out a compromise with residents and the, and the business interests similarly to this, where Colonial was looking to take over the former Kimberly Diner site, use it for storage. So if you drive down Gunn or Ford Street, you may notice that there's a similar four-foot berm. There's a sidewalk that was created running parallel both along Gunn Street and Ford Street, and they did not use trees, they used four-foot arborvitae's at that location. So the plan here, based on the compromise that was worked out with Colonial Toyota, contemplates using arborvitae's. That's one thing. The second, to Alderman Veccharelli's suggestion about 14 spaces, I can certainly live with an increase from the 11 spaces and make those available with the proviso that it not adversely impact 38 Twin Oaks. If you note on the map, the 11 units, the 11 parking spaces would include two handicap spaces and nine regular-sized spaces. And if we were to, or recommend an increase in the number of spaces there, it would have potentially an adverse impact on the residents who own 38. So I would say that as, as long as 38, the residents or owners of 38 Twin Oaks can speak up and make known their concerns, I can certainly live with an increase in number of spaces there. Thank you.
Alderman Giannatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening to the members of the board. So the parking is a very sensitive issue, and based on what I'm hearing, we're, we're in a position where we need to increase it one way or another. I don't think that by increasing it, it's going to have an adverse effect on 38, to Alderman Anderson's point, because I believe it's already, has adverse effect throughout that whole street at certain times of business, when Lassie's has customers coming in and out. So I think any additional parking would be helpful. I, I did hear from the mayor at the leadership meeting, and he mentioned to me, he indicated that Lassie's was going to be enhanced by 10 or 11 spaces through this project, but what I heard from the owner of the restaurant is there's already 10 or 11 spaces being used. So there is no, there is no addition, there's no extra parking, based on what's being submitted tonight, based on what the neighbors have brought to our attention, based on the owner of the restaurant. There's no net gain. There's already 10 or 11 spots that are being used intermediately, and the mayor, I guess, respectfully disagrees with that. But based on what Mr. Rorick said in the record, you know, he operates his business there on a daily basis, and these spots are already being utilized. So back to Alderman Veccharelli's point, I, I do agree wholeheartedly that there should be an increase. I don't know, Alderman Bevan mentioned 25. I don't know if the plan could handle that, and that's my next thing, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'd like to call Mr. Macaluso to the podium to answer a question in regards specifically to the original plan that was proposed. How many spots were proposed and how many spots were taken away from the police department? I guess that would kind of give us a range of what, what we initially were looking for as far as additional parking.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Giannatasio. Initially, we had no spaces within the right-of-way. It was just going to be a proposed cul-de-sac with one-sided street parking as per the request from the Milford PD. Right now, they do have signs posted, I believe, as one of the property owners said, but nobody pays attention. They will enforce it with onsite parking on the north side, I'm sorry, with no parking on the north side, and on-street parking on the south side. When Sanford Realty met with Mr. Rorick and myself during just a field meeting, he recommended putting spaces in the right-of-way. I said, "That is not our property. That's city property. We would have to go to the PD and request it." At that time, I went to Sergeant Chilla, and Sergeant Chilla thought it would be a good idea to alleviate some of the additional parking from the restaurant, the neighbors, and whomever. So it is an increase in parking with those spaces there, if you look at it. The, as Alderman Veccharelli requested, can we add 14? I, and I like to go on record to say, we had 11 based on the sightlines. We have to be sure, it has to be engineered. I can't just throw out a number, 14, 25. If you get into 25, now you're cutting into other people's properties. He does own the piece on the end that was an abandoned house. He bought that, and there is another house that is under foreclosure. They have no intention of buying that. They have no intention right now of going into the residential neighborhood to hopefully address that concern. He does abut both sides of Twin Oaks. He owns both properties, so that's why he's requesting the abandonment only within his property line. He's not going beyond that. Only what he owns is what he's requesting the abandonment, as Attorney Bertram had said, "How you abandon the street?" The neighbors had agreed to put the four-foot berm and the arborvitae's. We wanted a decorative fence. They did not want a decorative fence. They are using, again, as Alderman Anderson stated, the model that was built on Colonial Toyota. That's what they want. That's what we agreed to. In your package, you'll see the approval from all the neighbors on Twin Oaks, and that's what was part of the stipulation. I could assure you, the arborvitae's or white pines are not going to undermine the sidewalks. We're not putting maples or anything else. We're looking at a, a screening method to satisfy the neighbors, and it'll be up higher, and there won't be light shining into the street. We're not touching that. All his operation is going to be towards the post road. So I think it is an improvement from a life safety. You don't have vehicles going through, and again, you heard one of the property owners, the cars that whizzed through there. We're trying to accommodate the property owners, including Mr. Rorick's property on Bridgeport Avenue, the property owners on Twin Oaks. So it's kind of a balancing act. If we could get more spaces and PD allows us, and we, we can make it with the sightlines, that's our biggest concern, the sightlines, because we don't want anybody getting hit, then we will do it. So we'll do everything we can to accommodate all the property owners and the city. Hopefully, I answered your questions.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, you did. Mr. Macaluso, can you just briefly tell the members of the board the improvements that the business is, is paying for, all the improvements in this project?
The Chevrolet of Milford will basically construct the new road cul-de-sac, put in the sidewalk, put in the berm, put all, put all new curbs in, repave the street. So all the improvements are going to be at no cost to the city. It'll all be on the Chevrolet of Milford. So, and then there is a sanitary sewer easement that runs down Twin Oaks, and we have to abide by that sewer easement by giving it to the city of Milford for pass and repass. If there's a problem, wastewater could get on to his property and utilize that sanitary sewer easement.
Just to, just to final, just to sum up. Mr. Macaluso, in your opinion, you mentioned the sightlines. How much flexibility, in your opinion, is there to add more spaces? I know we're at 11 based on the application that's before us, but in reality, how many more spaces do you think we could possibly squeeze?
Well, again, preliminary design, we saw that we tried to get 14, 15, and we had to cut it back to 11. Once we get into final design, then that'll give us a definite idea of what we could do. But right now, it's a minimum of 11, with hopefully more, and we'd probably have to look at cutting the berm down or doing something not to jeopardize, again, the other neighbors. And that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Macaluso. You know, the, the glass is half empty and half full. We didn't hear from all the residents. I know there's an affidavit indicating that they're satisfied with everything, but there's likely to be some compromise. And I guess my question is, when you had indicated this is not the final plan, you know, you're going to look at the sightlines and see what we can do with it, will you be coming back here again for approval again? Or once we approve this, it's with just planning and zoning? That would be my first question. Have follow-up.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Vitale. No, I will not be coming back to you. We would be going to planning, zoning, which we would then have to go through all the city departments, police department, fire department, engineering, and public works. So, and, and the state of Connecticut.
So then, then it comes down to us giving final approval tonight. I, I cannot support this. You know, I agree with all my person across the, Alderman, across the aisle, the aisle there, Mr. Alderman Veccharelli, that there should be an increase in, in spaces. I, you know, we talk about a two-hour limit, which is more difficult to uphold than parking on the opposite side when there's no parking. The visibility of a patrol car coming down the Boston Post Road to see if there are cars on that side would make it easier to tag them or do whatever they need to do, rather than they go in there and to check and mark a tire to see how many hours they've been there already. It's about parking spaces. It's about compromise, and it's about abandonment. It's about a lot of issues, and I, I think there should be an increase in parking spaces. And I, either we need to, because if it doesn't come back to us for final improvement, which it will not, I think we need to postpone this to, until we can see what those plans look like with added spaces. If, in fact, the sightlines allow it, if, in fact, you can squeeze some more spaces. But at this point, I, I would like to make a motion to postpone until we see those final pieces.
Just one thing, Alderman Vitale. I'm a liaison to the Milford Police Department Commission, and it's their purview only for parking. They're in charge of all parking in the city of Milford, so that, like Mr. Macaluso said, when it goes into the final stages or the final design, they'll see firsthand exactly what's left. I'm sure they'll give you as much parking space as that they can, keeping in mind with the line of sight issue and, and neighbors, as, as they try to compromise with.
I understand, and thank you for that, for that qualification. But the fact remains that, you know, we still would not have any say in it. If it doesn't go, maybe we could bring it back to the attention of the police department and whatever. But I, I think what I'm looking to is to come back here and saying, you know, we can squeeze one more place. I think we need more parking there to, to accommodate and to make everyone happy in that situation. I, I know, and we'll hear from everybody first, so I come back with that motion, I retract that motion of postponement, but, but we need to think about it to see if we need to be heard, we can hear that, that final plan. Thank you.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I, we're looking to give up quite a bit of a right-of-way. It's, well, it looks to me, it's, it's not half, but it's at least a third of that road that we're going to be giving up, so that the owner that owns, he owns property on both sides will have a continuous piece of property. I would hope that the, the design, whether the 14 spaces can be approved in the existing right-of-way, or whether the owners of the private property has to give some of their property up. property up to make a better line of sight to include the extra spaces, I don't, I'm not really of either choice. I don't care how it gets done, but we're going to give up a big chunk of right-of-way there. And I think that kind of makes that, those properties then would be connected and much more usable. So a little sliver from the other side to get a few more parking spaces, I don't think would be a lot to ask for. You know, it's, we're not asking, you know, for the owners to give us the same size of the street that we're giving up on the left and give us that property on the right for parking, but we are asking to try to get more parking spaces. So, you know, the line of sight, I'm not sure how the Police Department works, but I'm sure what they say is very important and meaningful. I hope that Westcott Mapes could, you know, look at this and come up with some type of design where we can get these 14 spaces in there, and that would seem to maybe, hopefully, stop the homeowners from having the people that are parking in that area park in front of their street, in front of their house. If there's, you know, if you put four parking spaces down there, it's not going to accomplish anything. They're still going to be aggravating those people. I think with 14, because they're not, they're not using 14 now, but with 14, I'm hoping that that would kind of alleviate the aggravation of the homeowners getting people parking in front of their street. And also with the two-hour parking, we're talking about getting people coming in and out that are basically using the area and using that parking for the area, and not just, you know, parking their car there for three days and just using it for their own personal parking spot. So, you know, when we talk about the line of sight, it's a dead-end street. There's only, who's coming down that street that's going to hit anybody? The person that backed out of it? Yeah, he's not going to hit himself. And certainly, you know, there's only five, six houses on the street, so the traffic, I know, will, should be, should be minimal. So I don't think it's like, it's not a high-volume, you know, area where this car is zipping up and down the road. I guess, I'm hoping that we can get the extra spaces and the time limit, and I think everybody could be happy. And I know that Alderman Bevin had, he'd said that he would like a lot more parking, and I realize we don't want to chisel in too many parking spots that would then be in front of the homes, because we're trying, well, we're trying to make it nice for them too and put the arborvitae there so they don't have to look out at a parking lot full of cars, and so they'll be happy, and I think they'll be happy with the arborvitae. I think they'd be happy that people won't be parking in front of their house, and I think that those parking spaces, if there's enough provided, it's going to serve a very useful purpose and make everybody happy. So we are giving up a lot of space that will be taken over from, and made into private property. So we're not getting anything really back from that space, except 11 spots, which is really a small, little area. So need to make a little bit more parking to, you know, have a nice, happy compromise. So I'm not going to ask for a motion yet on this, because I know that there's still more discussion, but anyway, that, I'm hoping that we can move in that direction.
Thank you. I tend to agree with some of what Alderman Vecchirelli said. I mean, they are getting a huge chunk, and I think we could, there should be some way to accommodate more parking spaces. I mean, Lassie's been there for a while. Parking has been a problem. I think there's some way that they could accommodate at least a few more spaces. So I do tend to agree with Alderman Vecchirelli with some of his points.
I'm going to have to, unfortunately, agree that we might have to postpone this, but I do want to put a word in for the residents there. This is a plan that they supported, and I think I want to be careful in recommending an increase in the number of parking spaces with the fervor that is coming from the board, understanding that this is, after all, residential neighborhood, and whether it's been overparked or illegally parked by a restaurant, I don't think automatically means that we should be pushing so hard without further information. And I also look at the 8-24 that was given to us by the Planning and Zoning Board, and I also recognize the Police Department, but I'm unfortunately going to suggest that, rather than continue to discuss this, that we postpone this.
Alderman Gerben.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I do have to support more parking, but Alderman Shaw brought up a good point that, you know, does cut into the neighborhood a little bit more. But what's preventing you from designing, redesigning that, engineering that so it can support another 10 spots, half a dozen spots, or a dozen spots, to increase to more? Alderman Bevin had suggested 25 spots. Does it just be re-engineered?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Gerben. I have to get permission from my client, because it's going to be more money out of his pocket to do preliminary plans and take a look at it. I cannot authorize that. And again, to answer the question, as Alderman Shaw said, we did sit down with the neighbors. They agreed to the plan presented in front of you. We would have to go back to them and say, "Here's what we're proposing." Again, they were happy that it was one-side parking with 11 spaces to be used by all. And again, that's signed, if you look in your packet, their names are on there as approved to that plan. So I cannot deviate without my client saying to go ahead and do it, and two, to go back and get all the neighbors to sign off, to address your question.
Just a follow-up there, Chairman. So I would also vote on proposing, you know, postponing it till we found out that information as well.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item before us is simply the abandonment of this parcel and some of these other discussions with regard to the parking and the parking duration and so forth, or if I'm not mistaken, I know they're related, but they seem to be somewhat ancillary. So maybe I could ask the city attorney, the city attorney, is it within our purview to, this motion is about abandoning this portion of the right-of-way. Is adding on all these other provisos about traffic studies and, you know, as Mr. Macaluso said, the homeowners have all signed off on this, but as Alderman Anderson mentioned, if we were to add more, four more, or three more spaces here, the people at 38 Twin Oaks Drive might have a different opinion. Can we alter this motion to include all these other provisos, or is this really just, we're voting on the abandonment, the other matters could be taken up separately?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Smith. It's a loaded question, and I'll defer to, I think, something Alderman Vitale said. This is your one bite at this apple. You're being asked to abandon the road, the public right-of-way. When you abandon a public right-of-way, as you note, I think Mr. Macaluso noted, what happens when a municipality abandons a public right-of-way, the adjacent property owners take fee title to the center line of the road. In this instance, the dealership owns both sides, so they would take title to the center line. In terms of, is this your purview, parking? No. Parking's the purview of the Police Department. Planning's the purview of the Planning Department. You're going down a rabbit hole of those conversations, but in terms of the conversation you're having tonight, your jurisdiction is to vote whether to abandon or not. If you are not comfortable voting to abandon, subject to more information, that's within your purview. So I think I answered your question out of both sides of my mouth, but that is my avocation.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, so we could postpone this, take it up again with maybe some further input from the Police Department, from Westcott Mapes and so forth, and take that with more evidence or more information when we take it up again next month or whenever?
You certainly could postpone the vote, because, as I said, you could ask for more information, whether the property owners agree, whether Mr. Macaluso's client agrees, that's out of your purview. You can ask, you can always request more information so that you can deliberate in a more informed manner.
Thank you, Mr. Bertram. Alderman Vecchirelli.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, in light of everything that's been said here tonight, that we may be able to, well, hopefully make everybody, maybe not happy, but satisfied if we could get a two-hour parking and a 14 spaces there. So what I would like to do is make a motion that we accept this plan with the understanding that the parking spaces will be limited to two-hour parking during, two-hour parking, but at nighttime, like, let's say, during business hours, two-hour parking, and we need a minimum of 14 parking spaces. So when Westcott Mapes comes back with this, we will need to have 14 spaces and with the Police Department's okay and with the two-hour parking. So if they can come back with plans that somehow manage to fit 14 spaces and for two hours of parking, I think that this board would be happy with that, and I think that the, both parties would be satisfied. So I would like to make that in the form of a motion, that there be 14 parking spaces in that area, in that same area, contiguous, and with the two-hour parking limit.
Alderman Vecchirelli, you can't, in your motion, you can't put in what the parking place is going to be. That's not the purview of the Milford Police Department. You could, you could request that the Police Department look at that, that portion of the motion, that portion of the project, and see if they could see it in their way to add that many spaces, but you can't put that in your motion, because it's not in our purview.
Well, my motion is, is for the Westcott Mapes to go before the Police Department, or whomever they have to, and ask for the 14 parking spaces and the two-hour limit. How they go about that is pretty much up to them, how they draw these plans and get Police Department approvals and stuff like that. But before I could say okay with this, my motion is that they come back to this board and show me a plan that's been approved by all the different agencies that show 14 spaces and two-hour parking. Because until that can happen, I really can't support this, because it's going to continue the problem that we already have down there. So while I don't, I'm not making this contention upon the Police Department doing anything, but I realize the Police Department is the, they're the body that's going to be in charge of how many spaces are down there and how long they can park there, if they want to say that. So from my conversation with Westcott Mapes and the owners of Lassie's, it seems like everybody might be able to live with this, 14 spaces and a two-hour parking limit. So if Westcott Mapes can come back to us, and if they got to chisel a little property off of the owner's property, and not just the right-of-way, to manage this, then so be it. But I'm hoping that he'll be able to come back with drawings that say, "Yep, here's 14 spaces, and the Police Department has okay two-hour parking." Then I think this board would probably be happy. So I would like to put that in the form of a motion, that we come back with plans that shows that these will be two-hour approved by the powers-to-be, and also that there will be a minimum of 14 parking spaces in that same area. So if I could make that in the form of a motion and get a second, I'd be happy.
You heard the motion from Alderman Vecchirelli. Is there a second? Are you going to second the motion? I don't hear a second. Alderman Giantasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make a point, I think it's a very important point that Mr. Macaluso indicated more than once. In our packet, supposedly, everyone that lives on this street is in favor of the 11 spots. I just want to be clear. And there was one person here at the public hearing, Mr. Macaluso. I didn't get her name, but was, is she one of the neighbors that signed off that's in favor? Because I think that's very important before we move forward with any kind of directive.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Giantasio. Yes. She is a property owner. She did sign off, and I believe what she was saying, she's tired of calling the Police Department. People are parking there, even though it says no parking. She signed off. She spoke to, at that time, Sergeant Chilla. There is a new sergeant now, Craniac. Sergeant Chilla has been promoted to lieutenant, but he's still part of this process. And all she wants is to make sure that there's one side, no parking, and then those 11 spaces are not strictly for Lassie's use, and I believe, as Alderman Vecchirelli had pointed out, that we could, which we did not, talked to the Police Department at that time to put a time limit on, so this way, everybody could enjoy those parking spaces, not Lassie's, not the property owners. But answer your question, yes, she was one of the property owners that signed off.
Okay. So the reality is, there was no neighbors that were here tonight opposed to this. We have to, you know, keep that, we have to be mindful of that. And I don't want to speak for Mr. Rourke, but I guess you did mention that you weren't opposed to the plan, but you were just questioning the plan. Okay. So with that being said, just so I can meet with my caucus, can we take a five-minute recess before we do anything, and then maybe we can all kind of regroup and then, is that okay? Thank you.
Five-minute recess. I'm going to ask, is there any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Bevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like also to agree with Mr. Anderson, I believe it was Mr. Anderson, to table this with the thought that with you, when you come back with a redesign, to add more parking in your redesign, where the parking, the proposed 11 spots are redesigned, seeing that you're going to tear up the road anyways, you're going to reconfigure it to make it a cul-de-sac, my thinking is that you should be able to redesign the road to put more parking there or somewheres else. And rather than having the 11 parking spot minimum, I'm willing to concede down to maybe 20 minimum, and see what they come back with the redesign. The other thing about the neighbors and everyone signing off, I look at it as that, and I may be wrong, they were given one design, and the one design they approved on, because it's better than what they have. I don't know, maybe you, maybe I can be told that they had their choices of two or three designs, and this is what they came up to, rather than, "This is what we'd like to do," and all the neighbors and everyone else signed off, because it's better than what they have right now. I look at it as, if you were offered a piece of cake, you're going to take a piece of cake, but perhaps you could have got a piece of cake with ice cream on it too, but you never had that choice. Is that, was this the only design that the neighbors and everyone got to see?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Bevin. No, it was not. This has been going on for months. We met with the neighbors. I wish they were here, they could tell you how many times. We showed them many different designs. We showed them many different designs, one of which, we did not have the eleven spaces. They were happy not to show those eleven spaces, because they don't want spaces there just for the restaurant. They want it for their properties. That's their street, that's the way they felt, and they wanted to, you know, not have, no disrespect to Mr. Rorick, but they didn't want his patrons parking in front of their homes. This was an idea to add additional spaces to try to appease Mr. Rorick, the neighbors, and also, as Alderman Anderson said, it affects the property owners. We start cutting into there, we're taking away, now you're going to have parking right in front of their homes, instead of on the end of the cul-de-sac, or the beginning of the cul-de-sac. We could take a look at it, I'd be happy to, again, get permission from my client and go back to the neighbors, but we did many, many different versions of designs. I just didn't come here and throw this out.
Are you done, Alderman Bevan? What? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You talk about the people don't want to see parking, a parking lot across their, from their homes, but the parking lot right now, with the people that are here, is on their street and on their front yard.
No.
They're parking on their front, let me finish, they're parking on their front yard and on the street, and we're looking to alleviate the parking in front of their houses and on their front yard by giving either people going to the restaurant a place to park, and a couple of the residents said that they actually will park in those eleven spots. So I don't see your point where the residents would be looking for another spot that they're looking across the street, when the fact is the car is parked in their front yard. What's the difference to be, if the car is parked in your front yard or across the street? That's my question on that. Again, I'm just asking that this be re-looked at, and maybe configured another way to get some more parking spots in it. That's all I'm looking for. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Bevan. What I'm talking about is putting a designated parking cut-in, as we're showing across from the entrance on the left side by Lassie's Restaurant. As you start bringing it in front of their homes, having designated parking cutting in, that's what they did not want to see. They understand people are going to park on the street, in front of their homes, whether it's their neighbors, the Lassie's patrons, whomever, as long as it's on one side, which is the south side, they just didn't want to see the street turned into a additional parking lot by moving the eleven spaces all the way around the curb going up towards the cul-de-sac. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, and my, and my last question will be, with the eleven spots, as soon as you come into the street, is there another way to keep those eleven spots and basically make them side-by-side to make that a twenty-two spot? And not increase the floor plan any here, but go in on to the property of the Chevy dealership, just to get more spots there, because some of those spots will be used by the Chevy dealership for people coming in wanting to buy vehicles.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Bevan. No, they are not going to be used by the Chevy dealership. The Chevy dealership is going to have entrances and exit on Bridgeport Avenue only. They are not going to have any entrance or exit on Twin Oaks. We're cutting the curb cuts off of the Boston Post Road, which, again, DOT is happy with. So they're going to only have entrance and exit on the Post Road. It's not the intent for his patrons to park on Twin Oaks, that's not the intent at all.
Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll try one more time. I think what we're being asked to do here is fine and fair, and I'm ready to approve this tonight. I don't think we need to take over the role of the planning and zoning nor your job, but most importantly, the residents, the ones who are impacted, are in agreement of this plan, and they've seen the plans as you've done. Also, in regards to the one restaurant that seems to be at the center of this discussion and their parking, they are also benefiting from this plan. What strikes me is you're trying to make one entity have more than they're given. I understand there's a parking issue, but I feel for the residents here who have agreed to this plan, and we somehow think we can do better than what the residents have already said that they wanted and for which they've approved. And I did come late for the public here, and I do apologize, but I did catch the comments in my understanding, and if I'm misquoting, is that the restaurant owner is okay with this. Am I, and hopefully I'm not misquoting, so I don't know why we're spending, let me put it another way, I appreciate the diligence that the board gives, and I think it catches a lot, but I think that in this discussion, we've missed the point of this. And I appreciate the good work that everybody did in working with the residents. I am very supportive of this plan. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Is that in the form of a motion, Alderman Shaw? You attempting to make a motion? Alderman Giannatasio.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would also like to rise in support of this as submitted. I think the caution here is, we have had a lot of eight-twenty-fours before us. The last meeting, there was probably two or three, and some of them weren't well-planned. And I think that this one is the exception, being that the applicant took the time to sit down with the neighbors and make sure that all of their needs were being met, and we're thankful that the restaurant owner appeared tonight and is in agreement with the plan as well. The parking is going to be much closer to your establishment, I think that's going to be a benefit as well, rather than your patrons having to go up the street. It's going to make things a lot easier for them in the winter months to come in and out of your restaurant. So I would have to agree. If the board feels comfortable, I would be in favor of voting on this tonight, but that's up to the, you know, majority of the board. Thank you.
Alderman Grant, I'm sorry, you've been, your hand's been wagging for quite some time, and I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I mean, there's been a lot of good discussion tonight about what's best for the neighborhood and what's best for the local businesses. And one thing that, you know, has now recently been starting to be mentioned is, you know, the approval that this is already received from the residents and the people that live there and are there on a daily basis. I mean, in addition to them, the Public Works Director, the City Engineer, the Fire Marshal, and the Police Department have all, and Planning and Zoning have all unanimously approved this as it is. So I mean, this has the support of everybody that's seen it so far. The idea of adding more parking is a good idea, at the same time, the way this is designed, it does take an, not approach into the actual neighborhood, and I say that we should approve this as presented.
Alderman Smith.
Mr. Chairman, is there, is there another motion besides the original motion on the floor?
Absolutely not.
I would just like to ask.
We're on discussion of the original motion, as we're on.
I would also just like to second Alderman Shaw and Alderman Giannatasio's position that I think we're overthinking this. I applaud Alderman Beccarelli and Alderman Bevan's thought that we should, when we do an abandonment like this, that the city gets something back for it in the way of more parking spaces, something of greater amenity for the community, but as I think Alderman Grant just pointed out, we've got the DOT, we've got every resident here, why, we don't need to second-guess this. I'd like to, I'm not going to ask to move the question, because I know there's other people who want to speak, but I am going to vote in support of the original motion.
Alderman Beccarelli.
Well, when we okay this with the eleven spots, and then the people continue to park in front of those homes, well, then, every one of you on this board that votes to approve this as the way it is right now, they can thank you. Because after we give away that giant road over there so we can have one big continuous piece of property, and we got nothing back, because of the spaces that we're getting over here, that's in the right-of-way already, that's the road. That's where the sidewalk is. So now we're just, we're putting some parking spots, so what do we get? What do we get after we gave away three-quarters of that road that we use right now? We gave him a lot, and we got eleven spots where our sidewalk would normally be. That's a real smart, that's a real smart bargaining deal. And we got a restaurant down there that's been there forever, and people love it down there, and parking is a premium, and we're here tonight to protect the people on that street so they're not aggravated with parking in front of their house. Does anybody understand that? And he's already said, these eleven spots, the people are still going to be running up and down that street parking, so you're solving nothing, and you're giving away our bargaining chip. Because if he wants that piece to be continuous, contiguous, all we got to do is get a little bit more space on this side, and we could put twenty-five parking spots over there for anybody. If they have parties over there, picnics, those people will have a place to have their people park. And it will also be able to be used as a facility for parking for the restaurant and other restaurants right in that same area. So, yeah, everybody's fine and dandy, because everybody said this was approved, but look at what you're doing. You're not going to fix the parking in front of those people's houses, which you're also worried about, because you're not making enough parking spaces. And if this guy wants this piece of property, and you know he does, this is the only opportunity we have to say, well, we're going to give you that, but you got to give us a little bit over here to put some parking here. So, you know, I don't know what the big hubbub is about. You should all see this very clearly, but obviously you don't. So I won't be supporting this as submitted, and that's why.
All right, motion on the floor, and it was seconded. Is there any more discussion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Everybody has a good point. There are many points that were made here today, conceptual pieces, and we heard from Mr. Macaluso indicating the fact, whether it can be noted or not, whether the business owner wants to go ahead and say, hey, give us a little cutout, or this is, we have to rework, massage the plans a little bit to see if we can get more parking in there. I still say originally that we need, this is our last bite of the pie here, that, you know, if we go ahead tonight and approve it, forget about it. You're not going to say anything, you're not going to do anything about it. I would feel as though Mr. Macaluso could go back to that individual and say, look, we need to rework, remassage it, we've given up something, compromise, I said compromise before. So I would like to go back to my original and say that I would like to postpone this until we can see if in fact, right, can come back with a plan that says, look, you really can't do it, most we can give you are two spaces or three spaces, it's better than what we have. I would say, I'd like to make a motion at this point, I think everybody's talked to this end, and I'd like to make a motion to postpone.
There's already a motion on the floor. It needs to be taken, it needs to be taken care of. If you want to amend, if you want to amend the motion. Motion was made and seconded, and now we're under discussion.
Yeah, and he made a motion.
Now you've made a motion, another motion now?
That takes precedence.
Is there a second on that motion?
I did, second.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
No.
Alderman Beevy. Alderman Bevan. Alderman Casey.
Yes.
Alderman Gurman.
Yes.
Alderman Giannatasio.
No.
Alderman Grant.
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman.
No.
Alderman Shaw.
No.
Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Beccarelli.
Yes.
Alderman Vitro.
No.
Alderman Vitale.
Six-six tie, motion fails on the original motion.
Can I ask for a recount on that?
You sure can.
Seven, seven yes, I'm sorry.
Motion passes.
Seven yes, so the motion passes. Seven yes and six no, motion passes. Alderman Beccarelli, Agenda Item Eight, oh, I'm sorry, it was nine. H G was so long, I thought we're still on it. Agenda Item Number Ten, Budget Memo Transfers. Consideration of Budget Memo Transfers Number Eleven, Twelve, Fund Ten, F Y Sixteen. Alderman Beccarelli.
Make a motion to approve the Budget Memo Transfers Number Eleven and Number Twelve, Fund Ten, F Y Seventeen.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Beccarelli, Agenda Item Ten B.
Make a motion to consider approving the refunds in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Ten B.
Okay, excuse me, we're on Ten B. Make a motion to consider, to approve the Budget Memo Transfer Number One and Number Two, Fund Ten, F Y Seventeen.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Alderman Beccarelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the refunds in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Reports of Standing Committees. Are there any reports?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Just a reminder to colleagues that there is a Public Works Committee meeting tomorrow evening, 7:00 PM, at the Public Works Office. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. Is there any more standing committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Is there any reports from any of the special committees? Seeing none. There is no, under Item Number Fourteen, there is no executive session. Under Fifteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.